Talking back this way. That'll just mess you up with that. You have to turn it, sir.
Commissioner Ashbrook here, Mayor.
Thank you.
Did you see Kevin Pitts or Larry? We don't see Larry yet. We don't see Larry yet. Does it take you how long to start? We've got one minute, Mr. Meyer. One minute.
Yeah, I have 12 o'clock.
If everyone please rise and I'll ask Ms. Charlotte three fourths and Commissioner Lowery to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me, please. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for today. We thank you for this opportunity to be here to conduct the business of our city. We pray for our leaders. We pray for our military people that you would keep them safe as well as the people who are in harm's way from this hurricane. And thank you for your mercies and your love and ask that you would forgive us when we fail you for these things we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we will call the meeting of the city commission to order. And thank you all for coming in this bad weather. The folks that are not normally here, we appreciate your interest in our city. And to get out in this weather, we certainly appreciate that. So the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which are the regular commission meeting minutes of nine one and workshop of nine eight. And before we get on with that, Commissioner Ashbrook's online.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, great. You hear us fine?
Loud and clear.
Okay, good. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes and the workshop. Okay. Commissioner Hopkin made a motion to second to that motion.
I'll say.
Second, Commissioner Lowery. Any discussion? Call in favor, aye. Aye. Oh, same side.
Aye.
Motion passed five and a. All right, Mr. City Attorney, we have a few ordinances we need to go with. First ordinance is the ordinance five seventy-five, which concerns water rates. I'd like to first open a public hearing, bring in any discussion on the water rates. Anyone like to come forward and speak to the ordinance five seventy-five, which deals with water rates. Please come forward and state your name and sign in. Thank you. State your name, please.
My name is Mary Jacoupe Boucher, and I just moved here to Fort St. Joe the middle of June. And I live in Windmark, at Windmark Beach. And all I know so far is that I got my first water bill was $290 and my second month was $344. So I know I've been told seemingly it was because the sprinkler system has been on, but I was charged just as much for sewer than it was for, you know, as for water. So I tried to challenge that bill because if I had known I was going to get water bills like that, I wouldn't have bought the house. So I know the rest of my community, anyone on my street anyway, meant to be here, but I think with the bad weather, they didn't support. Anyway, I definitely do not want any rates to go up.
Okay. Right. Right. Jim, do you want to maybe explain to this lady how the water sewer situation works and it can, you know, impact her if she continued using sprinkler versus having a separate meter or a sprinkler system?
Absolutely. A lot of the newer houses, we work with the contractors because some of the contracts are tied into the actual irrigation will be tied into the house meter. And without, there's no way for us to distinguish what is irrigation, what is actually being used for potable water in the house for consumption. So what we suggest is one or two things, either A, get a separate meter, you can get an irrigation meter from the city. It's $450 for the irrigation meter, but you will not be charged any sewer on it, just the water, because we know that it's going on the ground and not going into the sewer system. The other option is C, if you can put down a shallow well for irrigation purposes. If you can do that, then there's no cost from the city, only cost you have would be the cost of the electricity to run the pump and the purchase of the pump itself. Which is what a lot of people in town do. I'm not sure the rules and regs for Windmark Beach, but I would encourage the neighbors and their stuff to at least get an irrigation meter. One time calls, it'll pay for itself in a couple of months, because if you look at your bill, a good portion of that is going to be for irrigation more likely, because it's amazing how much you can put on the ground. You could put three, thirty to forty, even sixty thousand gallons a month over the world of these irrigation systems and stuff like that.
No, I have turned it off as soon as I knew it was my sprinkler, because I thought I surely had a leak. I turned off the sprinkler system, so I'm hoping that this month will. But the city knows, they know in their heart and soul that that water was not used, there was no sewer on it. And I asked the girl to please take this cost of the sewer off, knowing that it just came from the sprinkler system, and they would not. And then I got several different prices. One day I was told it was $400 for this separate meter. Then the next day I called or a couple of days later, it was $450. One of my neighbors were told it was $300. So it's like, I mean, I really feel as if, I mean, there's people selling their houses already in Windmark. Because one person, lucky enough, I was one of the first ones to move in on that street, so I was the first one to actually get a water bill. So when it was so high, the first time I called and the second they told me, I turned it off. And I haven't had it on since, and I will never put it back on. I mean, if the grass dies, well, then I just put sound down like the rest of the houses. But, I mean, I really don't think it's fair, new people coming to this, whether it's, I don't know who to blame, the builder, the city, whatever, I don't know, but I am just, I mean, anything else about this city, I love. But, I mean, these water bills are just absolutely scandalous.
How many people's in your house?
Just me. And I wasn't even there for most of the time. And I didn't even know the sprinkler system was on, because it comes on during, I can see when the neighbors go on, but I didn't even know mine was on. And it took two months, nearly $600 for me to figure out that, you know. So I don't think that's fair at all to anybody. And then I heard, here's one of my neighbors coming in now, but I had heard from my realtor that his dad lives in the city and in Fort St. Joe and has been in the same house for sixty years. And he got a bill for like $500 just around the same time as us, which he's never had in his life. So I think there has to be some kind of a problem.
Dude, what you're saying is, a lot of the newer houses, we went back and looked at nearly every one of these, especially the neighborhood, just irrigation. Because there's no, like I said, there's no way for us to distinguish how much was used in the house and how much was irrigation, because it's all tied into it. But if you either get a separate irrigation meter or shut it off.
Yeah, but can you not help me for the last two months?
We, right now, are, we have no way to know how much went into the house and how much went on the ground, because.
Well, we can figure it out. If we go on next month's bill, from the time I turned it off, we're going to know then how much, because I've actually been living in the house. And I had my sister staying with me for a couple of days, so there would be more water usage for the actual, for the home for this month than there would have been for the last two. So that's one way to figure it out.
We have to follow the policies given down to us. And right now, there's no way for us to distinguish for the board to come up with a way to do an adjustment on that, unless we get some kind of adjustment policy or policy don't allow, because there's no way to distinguish it. The only way we can do it is if you have a leak and or one time a pool adjustment, because you can actually know the amount of the pool.
Well, that's what I, that's exactly. Because I've owned pools in my life, and that's I knew to do that. So, I mean, to me, there's a simple way of finding out how much, when my next bill comes in, I'm told it's only going to be like $84. Yeah, so then the difference for those last two months should be refunded back to me.
Unless we get, if we get a policy that we can.
So how do we go about getting a policy?
Or it has to give us a policy and stuff like that.
What do you think? I mean, I'm not the only one. My neighbor there, Ron, he's an exact, he actually got a bigger bill, because he only got one there. But everyone on my street is the same. As I say, one house is up for sale already. And, I mean, you have to wait two months.
Sorry to hear that. We're so happy you decided to move here. We'll try to work through that, but it's going to be very difficult unless you have a exact way. I understand your way of trying to say, I'm going to use this much this month and my sprinkler not on, but I use this much for the last two months. So there's actually no definable way to know, except estimate, and then we get into a can of worms that nobody will be able to close up. So we understand.
Yeah. Could we not go then for the next, go for the next ten months' usage and then do it back?
We would have to develop a whole new policy so it would apply to everybody. And so, so we started to look at that. I don't have a problem looking at that. We do have some kind of adjustment on the books when you have a leak, but for irrigation purposes, that type thing, there's no, there's no ordinance that would help with that.
But could I come back and appeal it in ten months' time and show you those? If my bill for the next ten months is $85, whatever they're telling me it should be, and then we know for sure, because I know, and you actually, the city water people can tell me that I turned it off on the 27th of July. So they're going to know for the next, if I use that irrigation. So I don't know how they can figure out what I use in the house if they know that it's been turned out outside. How can you figure that out, if you know it's not on?
Well, it's harder in the summer months, because some people may be washing their boats, some may be washing.
I don't have a boat, I know.
Everybody uses water different, some have pools, some let the kids play with the water. So there's no way to distinguish exactly how much we use outside versus inside. All we know is how much. So it's very similar.
But would you be willing for the ten months to, for me to come back with every bill?
I can make a policy. I can, you know, I can talk with the board and we can come up with some ideas, but I can't make a policy.
Jim, Commissioner Hopkin might make a comment.
I got a couple of questions, so I can have a clearer understanding.
Sure.
How long have you been in the house?
I closed the 16th of June. The water was turned on the 21st of June.
Okay.
But I didn't move in until July.
All right. So I know we have a policy that speaks if your bill, and Jim, help me out here, if your bill is more than double.
Three times what your normal bill is.
Okay. And I think what you, the fair thing to do is to, first, let's review that policy. I don't believe in my mind it's specific to just a running toilet or a water leak. It's a problem with the increased bill, and then you have to figure out that that's a good one. So I don't think it's too much to ask that we use the language we have currently. Let's look at your bill for the upcoming months and then come back and let's not apply new policy, let's use the policy that we have. And just so you'll know a little background, that policy has been changed numerous times. Sometimes it's even political as to why it was changed in years past. We won't get into that. We're trying to make the best policy and the fairest policy we can come up with. And I agree with your idea of, let's look at the bills forthcoming, and if it turns out you're under a hundred bucks for next three or four months, let's try and apply the current policy, see if that would help. Now, I don't know that I would support giving you full credit for the water that you use.
No, just even the sewage.
But the sewer side of it, I think that's fair enough. Let us review the policy.
Okay, that would be fantastic.
If we can't do anything, then I would ask you to come back after a couple of months of bill.
Okay, yeah.
Come back and refresh our memory and see if we need to change the bill. If it does say it's only for a leak, then we may need some added language to that bill.
Sure.
Or that ordinance.
That would be fantastic, because I have warned all the new neighbors that I've got, before they moved in, I said, the second you close, you turn off your sprinkler system. So, you know, one guy, I think I paid him for $60 and $100.
Yeah, that, the thing to do is put a well down, a shallow well, and use it for your water, you know, for your yard and the boat and all those things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hopkin.
That's not the only thing this, I can say about water, because a couple of people called me saying that, or the bill by $400 something dollars, or we pulled back and do a policy. It's going to have to do to everybody. They can't exclude one, one, two, three, four people just to go back and review.
Yeah, like Commissioner Hopkin said, we've got a policy, unless somebody has a complaint, they usually go to Carla or Jim. They review the policy and that we set place for them.
Right.
And they follow it. And that's it.
Yeah, they're the ones getting the phone calls, and they're stuck with a policy you created.
That's correct.
That always solved.
That's right.
The policy's pretty good for the most part on there. There's a few things that fall through the crack. What I'll do is, let's get a copy of it, let's get an each one of you, and let's sit down and let's all discuss those things. There may be some other areas that we need to branch out to, maybe it is the folks that have the irrigation, maybe it's another area that we can look at too.
Well, we used to have that summer program where you could sign up for it and you didn't pay the sewer side, because the city understood you were going to water your yard. And then that one was, I guess, done away with. Maybe time to revisit that policy again.
I mean, it was a fifth time, but maybe we'll get it all right after a while. Okay. Anyone else notice like to speak on the water rate? Again, ordinance five seventy-five. Oh, he does. Come right up, sir, and state your name and sign in for us. Thank you. Your name and address right here.
My name is Ronnie Maddox.
Speak, sir, speak this way, please, stand there. Thank you.
My name is Ronnie Maddox. I delivered your paper when I was moving.
Okay.
I'm originally from here. I'm Mary's neighbor, and I've talked with Jim, and he's been helping us trying to work out this thing. I wrote my bill down. I, it showed I used $30,000 down. And so, being down here, I turned my old, July, I always, you know, need water. But I did talk to Hal, and he, Hal Kills is the one that installed the sprinklers in the mountain. I told the VR, trying to work out a solution then, because my background is bank, I'm a number guy. And I've worked with cities and communities all my career, you know, on this. There's a government, the thing I, me and my sister were buying too, down here, because we eventually want to move back here. This poses a problem out there, which to me is a golden goose. I've been waiting for this to happen the same day for a long time, because this will eventually mean more evidence to the city, the county, you know, where other things can happen. Because I've seen this happen in Chippewa, where I moved from here too, and it's the same thing to get into, and you've got to have housing that people can move in. This is a golden goose opportunity. I've worked in my banking career with Santa Rosa to get all that 38 started. This reminds me of 38 in the nineties. And the hard break is, I'm hearing that a lot of people from here have to move out of here because things have gotten too hot there. And that's a shame, but because I always meant this is getting to a place to ever grow up. And so I'd like to see it for other kids and stuff like that, and people that want to stay here. But I talked to D.R. Horton, and this is what a solution that I've kind of tried for them to do is to go ahead and pay for it, split the cost with them, zip home on it, purchase. Because I don't think they're going to let us have ground wells out there, because they're afraid it's going to dry up the pond. So that's, I don't think at this point it's going to be an option for homeowners out there to do. So I suggested to the R about splitting the cost, does that bend into the cost of the house? You ain't had it, and add two halves, and put a separate system for the thing, because I don't want to see, you know, like, I'm not a believer in this stuff, but there's a Facebook page out there for Windmark. My wife has told me that there's some 90,000 gallons, 60,000 gallons, and, you know, we just can't, that, that's, I don't see how it's possible, because Hal told me, from what I understood from him, that when he put the system in, he hooked it up to come on for 30 minutes each day. My house sits on the corner, so I don't have all the pop-up heads that everybody else has. And so mine should only be, he said roughly 630. I made me thought it was a meter problem and just wanted to get it calibrated, because I've worked with some cities, and I know y'all, I don't know if y'all have it or not, to be honest with you. But when I worked with Fort Walton, before they put the meters in, they had a system that it pumped through a gallon before they went solid, and it would, yeah, hit that gallon going through it. Then it would shoot five gallons through it, three, five gallons, and then it shoots 10 gallons through it. And you knew that meter was right then, they went out and put it up. I don't know, Chippewa, we don't have that. I don't know, something that's written on it, they can test it before they put it up.
Oh, yeah. Is that right, John?
We don't have a bench test, no, sir.
Okay.
The meters come pre-calibrated, pre-certified from nationally, you know, it's a brand new, that's what they do from Windmark.
Well, the reason I say that is this weekend I came down to the stage of Miss Helen Grant's and all that kind of stuff down. Well, I noticed on the meter, and I got $50, it's flopping back and forth. It'll go from going up to going back down. And that's why it was kind of suspicious, because between me and Mary, they're showing, when you send me something, send 5,000 gallons per night, right, that filter's full. And it's not a leak. Everything, toilets in there use 1.6 gallons of water, you know, you got, and we, I don't know, then force closing, use the dishwasher, I tell you when to come down, I'll do that back at the house. So it's really just a shower, shower head is 1.5 gallon. Everything's in a condition at home. But it's not a leak problem, I think, I think that's true. And what I was pointing out with Jim, when I wrote down my bill, it says, after about every, it shows the reading at 8:45 a.m., 8:45 p.m., or you the one again?
Yeah, ultimately, yes.
What's your name?
John.
John, nice to meet you. Um, but I showed after eighteen or twenty readings, my bill that they sent me, it all matched, it shows 2,000 to 22, 2400 gallons. If you subtract out what Hal told me was the meter with my, what we tested was for the leak, it's showing I'm using 1,200 gallons when I'm there. There's not, I can't, if I'm using bathroom that many times, I need to go to the hospital.
I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly have public works come out and check your meter, they have a way to do that. It's a bad, bad.
And so that's some of the things I do, but I'm trying to work this out with VR on the business side, so they don't have.
That's a great idea. So you're talking about putting a, working out a deal that they'll put an irrigation meter in.
Yeah, and I think Hal talked to them too, because Hal's got the contract, and I don't, there's some on this website are saying, we're just not going to put the, here's where I've seen in the past, working with communities. Okay. One person on there says, well, I'm just going to have the way out, don't even put the sprinkler system in. I'm going to do same, or I'm going to do gravel. Well, then there's lost even for Hal. And may end up over time costing a job that he's got. So it's all a ripple effect that I have all the way through with all this vertical training. So you need to find a solution, and that's where I saw the solution was.
Great solution.
Is to go to the R and say, you know, why don't you split the cost with home or eat it off, but go ahead and put a system in, two meters, one for the water system. And I think Hal's talked to them too about doing that. But hopefully that's what they'll do for the rest of the homes that are out there. It's like the old Jim, that if they don't let us put them, you know, a shallow well, then I'll go ahead and put one up in the water system, but this time we usually going to get ran that, more than the weather changes every day. So it's going to, so.
I appreciate it.
But it is that, but that's, this is the great breakdown that I saw, and I think that's what, now, one guy that's selling his house, I think he was one of them. He was on, I never saw my sprinkler system come on, that's what I told him, told Pat. I just never saw them come on, so I went and checked and just turned it off, once we got it. But it also, the first four days we rented it, we're going to show them 500 gallons. And we want them there at all. And then it went through 740, 770 gallons on the a.m. reading. But it's like I showed Jim, then after 25 or so, we flipped, and now 700 reading is showing it 740, 8:45 a.m. And then 20 more readings later, then it jumped back and it's on the a.m. reading. So I don't know what system and how that works. I can show you on this, like I showed Jim, but I think on all of that, if you could just, if somehow, whatever, that is made to sprinkle, we figured that out, I bet it for everybody, just give them, at least on the sewer side, give them a break, if you can say that, that is made to sprinkle.
Right.
You know, that's, I think, is the working solution, but like I said, hopefully the rest of the house, it's like I was telling, the R don't want your housing, but you're not going to sell houses if you've got people putting on there that they got $1,200 worth of. That's really, we're not going to necessarily buy house.
So that's great.
Yeah, we appreciate that. So that's, that's.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Thanks for delivering my paper way back.
There were a lot of y'all.
Probably. So, anyway, okay, we're still in public, public hearing. Anyone else like to speak to the ordinance five seventy-five, which affects the water rates? The average bill in the city, which normally runs around $100, $150, it'll be a $2 a month of increase if this, if this passes. So is that, that's pretty much it, Jim? Okay.
Please get the averages.
The average per, the average bill in the city is 100 to 150, I'm not going to mention it exactly, but just ballpark. Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Is anyone online?
No, sir.
No one online? Okay. So with that being said, I need a motion for first reading of ordinance five seventy-five. Motion by Commissioner Hopkin, there's second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lowery. Okay. Commissioners in discussion? Commissioner Ashbrook online, you have anything to add?
Mayor, not a whole lot, you know, it's just a necessary evil. Our water costs money to make, and we're not a profit business, so it has to pass through. Until we can find a cheaper way to make water, you know, we've got to do what we've got to do.
Yes. Any more discussions? Call in favor? Aye, aye. Both same side. Motion passed five and a.
Ordinance number five seventy-five, ordinance of the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance five eighteen, establishing new base rates by customer classification, establishing new volume charge, establishing. establishing new annual adjustments for base rates and volume charges, providing for repeal of all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for an effective.
Okay, uh, ordinance 576, which is, concerns sewer rates. And like the floor for a public hearing, anyone like to speak on ordinance 576, which has to deal with sewer rates? Yes, ma'am, come right.
I think, no. No, I was just saying, you, this gentleman on the computer said to find cheaper ways to do it. Well, I, I had a townhouse in Panama City Beach, and so they must know how to do it, because my water bill for three months was $73. So maybe you should talk to them and get some hints on how, how they can do it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just saw where they're raising those rates, so I don't know how much, but once again, it's gotta be a break even a lot more.
They might have more back.
So, please come forward.
Good to see y'all, y'all. Uh, Kristy McGoey, Woodward Avenue, uh, Port St. Joe. Mayor, I think because there are people moving in, uh, it might be healthy to go over why we have to do the rates.
Right.
Appreciation, as well as the, the $16 million debt that we have to service.
Right.
And that bond that.
Sure.
So I'm just suggesting to.
I had that in mind, actually, but I was gonna, anybody that wanted to hear the history of it, I'd be glad to meet with them anytime, but I'm, I'm more than well, uh, willing to, uh, give my read or digest version of the history of it.
That came in to do the most recent rate.
Right, right, sure, sure. Uh, about 15 years ago, it found that, uh, that we needed, Northwest Water and Water Management decided that, that everyone along the coast needed to get off the aquifer. We had a perfectly good, uh, water plant that used, uh, well water, or groundwater, they like to call it. And so, uh, we were pretty much at the limit of that, and they said, well, you need a new water plant. Well, uh, we built the water plant for tune of about $14 million. And, uh, part of that deal was, when we, and with the county, when we annexed in Windmark, they put in an interlocal agreement, there were certain things that we had to do, uh, before they would annex, allow us to annex that in. And so, uh, the commissioners that were sitting up here at that time, uh, felt like that's what we needed to do, and so they, they voted, uh, voted to do that. Uh, St. Joe Company prepaid about 1,700, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, 1,700 and something, prepaid, uh, impact fee type.
Twenty-five hundred.
How much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred, okay. And so, the city used that money to build a water plant. But what happened in an interlocal agreement with the county, there were so many things that we had to do that the commission agreed on at that time, uh, that that cost us where we are today, which is basically, we have a, we have a, a loan for, you know, 14, 15 million, Jim, what?
It was 16.4 million dollars, plus we have, um, state bonds.
Yes, so, so, uh, in order for us to survive, then we, uh, we had to raise rates. And prior to that, when we had industry, we had St. Joe Company, we had, uh, Basic Magnesia, or Premier, they called it, and then we had, uh, Arizona Chemical. They paid 95% of the water and sewer rate for the city, and so we rocked along. All of us, I grew up here, all of us paying that $25, $30 a month, because the industry was paying the other part of it. And so, the paper mill closed in 95, shortly thereafter, Arizona closed. Just, uh, I don't really know the, how much the St. Joe Company paid us every month, but I do know that, that Arizona, a lot smaller than St. Joe, Arizona runs a check for $60,000 a month. So we had a $720,000 hole in our budget, just like that. Not counting what the paper mill paid, which is probably three or four times that. So we were stuck. We, we didn't, none of us up here voted on it. We inherited it, and we've been working on it for practically 15 years, trying to, trying to make it where we could at least break even and service our debt. And so, our, our, our note carrier, which is regions, uh, financial, uh, they insist that we have a rate study every year, and, and that we basically go along with this, uh, what that rate study determines, which, what we should be charged. We get more customers. I think we lower the rates. We're getting, we're getting really close, uh, but, but it's, we, we got a long way to go. So, so basically, in a nutshell, that's, uh, that's why we're at where we're at. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's not easy to raise the rates. We, I, I wish we could've been flat this year, because our rate's already very high. Uh, we have a lot of, of senior citizens living alone, and then that's pay $150 a month, a lot of money for them. But, uh, our hands are kind of tied until we, somebody comes to us with a whole lot more folks, and D R Horton, and the Windmark is finally getting there. But, uh, we're open to any suggestion that comes along, but for now, we're, we're kind of behind the eight ball, to say the least. So, anybody else that I, that I missed, I kind of read a digest version of?
Kind of good. Well, the only other thing I could add is, and I explained this to a gentleman on the phone today prior to this meeting, um, if we cut all the major projects, I explained to him, got a project on Long Avenue, the road's horrible. That's a $6 million project, maybe more than that. We got an alleyway around Sixth and Seventh Street. That's a big money project. It's flooded right now. If we wipe all those projects, all, we could probably maintain our water rate. The other part that needs to be mentioned is the agglorium tax rate for the city of St. Joe has not increased in over 13 years. The county is at, what, 7.4 or something? We're at half of that roughly. So in response to the, what you pay in Panama City for your water, I grew up in Panama City myself, water's cheap, but your property tax is gonna cost you quite a bit more than living in St. Joe. So it's a give and take. But as the mayor explained, uh, we inherited this issue, and we're trying to deal with it the best that we can.
Mr. Matt Chesser, you have another comment? Yes, next time you'll sit in front, won't you?
Oh, well, I was gonna answer you, because I know you give them a read or digest, but the rate charge, the reason you're giving them.
The rate, uh, they don't give it, we have a separate study, we pay every five years like $24,000.
They're getting a copy of that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Just for not, what's it, is it based on a three-year history or five-year?
No, Jim, it's a five-year, we require every five years to do the rate study.
The current rate study we have is for five years. If it expires, the new one that's right here in place right now covers 10 years.
I mean, is it giving you a projected rate, or is it based on past five, 10 years? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is it, is it including Michael?
It does go back, but it makes it forward. The big drivers in is gonna be customers. And with customers, we were down over 400 right after Hurricane Michael. Luckily, with the economy where we're at, it almost got back to 4, or we could be looking at a lot higher rate than 2%.
Well, that, there again, it goes back to, you don't wanna kill the golden goose that's coming in. And so, uh, that's what I was just wondering, when you mentioned the rate charge, if it, if it's based on back or if it's projected forward on what it could be, because it should have with all this coming in. Is there any sales tax here on gas? Y'all do sales tax, own the taxes, or is it directly after the order?
There's, there's tax on, there's gas.
I mean, for y'all, for raising money. Y'all put anything on gas tax around here, anything?
Yes.
We, we assign it away to the county till 2031. The city gets no gas tax money till 2030. But you are correct. Basically, the two drivers is gonna be customers, which looks, it looks very bright for the city, and the other part is capital improvements. Those are the two main driver indicators.
All right, thanks, sir, for one of them. Okay.
Round the one every time.
All right, ordinance 576, anyone else like to speak to that? Mike, anyone on the line?
No, sir.
Okay, I entertain a motion for the first reading of 576. Okay, Commissioner Hoffman made the motion. Second by Commissioner Langston, in further discussion. All in favor? I. I, same sign. Motion passed five and a.
Was Ashbrook saying?
Oh, that was Ashbrook saying.
Ordinance number 576, ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance 519, establishing new base rates by customer classification, establishing a new volume charge, establishing new annual adjustments for base rates and volume charges, providing for repeal of all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for an effect.
Alrighty, so we're now down to ordinance 577, which concerns water and sewer impact fees, which are charged to, to, uh, new construction, uh, in the city, as a requirement. And, uh, in this ordinance, we had a reduction on one side and an increase on the other, so basically, this is, uh, might be a slight, Jim, can you give me an idea of a slight increase, or we flat?
Yes, sir. Uh, what you're looking at on the water side is currently, the rates are 2,167 for the impact fee. It will be reduced slightly, or increased slightly, uh, goes from 2014, I'm sorry, to 2,167. So it's an increase of 153 on the water side. What this tells is, we're not getting as many water customers as we are sewer. We have the sewer all the way up in Cape San Blas, so on the water side, there's a slight increase of $153, that would be per household, new households coming in. On the sewer side, it goes from 2,700, I'm sorry, from 2,856 down to 2765, so we get a dang reduction of $91. What does this mean for somebody building a new house? It means $62 more on impact fees for water and sewer.
Okay. All right, anyone like to speak, uh, ordinance 577, what's your impact fees? Anyone online, Mike?
No, sir.
Good, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion, first reading of our ordinance 577. Motion by Commissioner Langston, there's a second. Second, okay, second by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor? I. I, same sign, motion passed five and a.
Ordinance number 577, ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, repealing existing section 70-188 code of ordinance, in its entirety, establishing capital facilities charged with water and wastewater, establishing water and wastewater cap fee, providing for metering, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for an effect.
Alrighty, so let's, uh, move on to, uh, old business. Uh, first item is a coronavirus update. Uh, I think everybody sees that our positivity, uh, numbers are going down, which is, uh, what we've been trying to do, and, and that's basically, in my opinion, two things. One, I think, we're testing less. Um, two, uh, everybody's been on board about masks, and we certainly, all of us up here certainly appreciate the folks that are complying with, with our requirement to wear masks. It appears that visitors in town are doing that, and, and obviously, the proof is in pudding. It's, it seems to be working, so, uh, I don't want to let our guard down by any means, because we got flu season coming up, so it could be, it could be really bad if we do. So please encourage your friends and family and neighbors to wear your mask when you're out, and you can't be six feet apart. Anybody got any comments on that? Okay, next item is Census 220. Jim, you have some information on that?
Yes, sir. They are still going through the neighborhoods. Please take a few minutes to work through the census people. We do need to make sure that we're all accounted for. This does help out with, a lot of money from healthcare to infrastructure, then a lot of different funds coming through the state and federal.
There is a deadline on that, and it slipped my mind. Does anybody know off the top of their head? It's just approaching pretty, pretty rapidly, Mr. Hoffman.
I think they moved, didn't they move it to October?
I, I hope so, because we were way behind, didn't we?
That sounds great. I think it's in October, so please, time is up this.
It was April, I believe. Okay. Wow. All right, Jim, new business.
Yes, sir. First item we have is the blue grant signage. We had a brief discussion our last meeting. Also handed you a, a handout that kind of gives a description of where the locations are for the new signs. Uh, this would be six new signs, basically in the same locations that you have, but more clear, precise as to, uh, what the city's asking for. The cost is $2,600 for the signs and for installation.
Oh, Mike, did you get a sign?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The, the, the five signs are four by four by eight. Uh, the four by four plastic signs that seat over, uh, eight foot, uh, four by fours, yeah. And then the, the one sign for the instructions at the launch is a metal three by three sign. But the other five signs are four by four on eight foot.
And that'd be, uh, number, sign number six, which is payment instructions.
Payment instructions, yes. That would be a three by three metal that would go over the existing, uh, payment box.
I like it, and I understand that you have others help you with, uh, placement.
That's correct.
Locations of where these would be placed.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the only concern I have, I'm, I'm glad I like direction, and it's, I think it'll be good for us down there. I, I think my only concern would, would be if, when you, whenever you guys get down there and start placing the signage, if it almost looks too, you know, too close together, maybe think about spacing them out. That would be my only concern.
I, I, I know what you're saying. We don't, City Rock City and all that every.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I know what you're saying, because I, we get too many signs, we got too many on read right now, I think, but, but.
Yes, sir.
Are they, looking at this, uh, I don't know what kind of distance you got, but I just might have to.
It is hard to tell by the background. Yes, sir, we'll, we'll.
Side sign, man. Should get our message across.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
I know we talked about a start date of doing different things of October 1. When are you planning on putting the signs up, I guess, is my question.
Well, we can move forward. I didn't get a schedule, but I certainly would think at two, three weeks, we could have the signs up.
I think we're gonna have to put that off, and then we're only two weeks into October 1.
And also.
And, and something we'll deal with is.
The one, the one sign where $10, $50, and then at the very bottom, it says fines in or towing. I, we're gonna, I, I have, I'm trying to get a meeting with the clerk of court or county judge next week, but I got some ideas of how we can implement the enforcement mechanism, right, ordinance, if it poses a fine kind of way to do it. And when we do that, we'll need to say the exact ordinance and how much it's gonna be, all that stuff.
Yep.
That has to be in that.
We're trying, we need a little.
Yeah, we probably don't, we don't have an ordinance right now that would deal with fines.
And I'm working on it, and I hope to have that soon.
And what it was the update? And what is the update on the new machine?
So the, the new machine is, the update is, I haven't worked on it since I've got an original quote of a machine that I think will work, but that's the problem, I only have one quote. It was under the bid threshold, but I've got to try to get two other similar products to get quotes on, on the other products. So I've got only the one quote and I've been tied up with the budget and so forth. The rate study and have not spent the time to get those other quotes. So I've got to do some more homework to, before I can bring it to you. So basically, I'm hearing we need to, we can move forward, but hold off on that one welcome sign that has the language.
Yeah, because if you're gonna charge people, you have to know what ordinance it is, how much it is.
Or, or we could, at pleasure of the board, we could say we're gonna start enforcing it November one. Push it back a little bit. And still, that's only six weeks.
Well, we would have to, we'd have to figure out what the exact ordinance is, how much you guys fines are going to be. Then we got our first reading, we got our advertising, we got our second reading. I don't see any, no possible way.
Yeah, I would be fine with holding off on the one welcome sign because I believe there's going to be some conversation and discussion about the, the amount we're charging for the annual pass. I plan on bringing that up myself. We also spoke at our workshop about the possibility of charging some of the commercial guides a fee. We didn't come up with an amount. I, I, I think while we're doing this whole revamp of our, of our launch area and making it better, we have to start talking about what is the maximum capacity we can launch at the boat landing. And I think we need to spend some time on reviewing how many parking spots can we accommodate? The other landings, both at the state park and at Presnail's, they use that system for many years now. And our landing is, is, I think, the busiest it's ever been in its history.
There were cars, trucks parked all the way to my office.
Right, that's what I mean. And I think it's just the.
First day of scouting.
We, I think it's upon us to decide how do we want to regulate it. Now, you've heard me say in the past and I'll still say it, I'm not gonna consider allowing people from other areas to take the spaces of the people that live here and want to use. That, that's gonna be priority number one. That's why it's free to launch for anybody that lives in the county. And if we can consider going up on the price that we charge the other people to use our landing, I think it'll bring down the amount of usage. But I, I think it needs to be tied to this whole concept.
Yeah. And, and really, and while you're on that, it brought to mind that I had many, many compliments on our police department during the first weekend of scolop season. If it hadn't happened to them, we'd have had some real issues down there. It could have been really volatile and I understand they handled it well. And, and Chief, you and you guys, please pass that on because it, they were down there mighty early and stayed late and directed. It was wonderful. But, but that being said, I mean, we got a lot of work to do to accomplish this. And holidays coming up in November, holidays in December. We almost want to say January one now. I don't really, I wouldn't like to do that. I hate to keep kicking the can down the road, but, you know, if we can really start working on it in earnest, let's go. But as far as the first five signs, with the exception of the welcome sign, I'm, I'm ready to go right now. But what we do need to do, we gotta have an ordinance to have fines. So what, what do you guys think? What do you want to do?
I, I definitely want to get it right the first go around. I mean, so I'm probably pulling back a little bit.
I mean, but for now, with these first five signs, are everybody okay? We'll go ahead and okay in the first five and getting them up?
I think it'll help. I mean, it'll get people used to following the direction. I think we need to also put the new stripes down. We paid some time in the past to have those areas marked off where you don't park on both sides of that road. The paint's nearly gone. Yes, sir.
I have an idea about that, that I have worked out. I actually have a drawing in my truck that I did on CAD. But if, if you guys are gonna restripe this street, that's a very wide street. I think it's like forty feet, forty-four feet or something like that. You can fit three lanes on that road. And that's the problem we're having is in the mornings, we're lining up two roads going to the boat ramp to keep them out of seventy-one. And I think the last weekend, we actually had to reroute, shut seventy-one down, reroute down Bald Cell because there were just too many in line. But if we could split the outgoing lane to one small lane closer to the curb and put two lanes going into the boat ramp where people understand they don't need a cop out there to line them up in two lanes, hopefully, that it will flow somewhat pretty steadily. And most of them while they're in line are going to stay anyway. If not, we have to get on to them when they pull up, park for thirty minutes, block everybody. So it's a, it's a process. But if we could get two lanes going in, restripe that road and one lane coming out, I think that would make things a lot better as far as traffic part. Just an idea.
How would the people that are not watching, that are going down there to the landing, to park and use the park and walk on the beach, how would they get there?
The same way we've been doing it when it's busy, the best way they can.
They just get in line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We either wait till a break in the far lane and go ahead and route them around it, or they have to get in line to go to the non-boat travel park. It's like rush hour in Atlanta down there sometimes.
Okay, boat ramp signs then. We kind of went all around it, but we needed to. Oh. Is there a motion to go forward to five signs? Unfortunately, there will not be a total because we're dealing with five now instead of six. So. I, I assume that there's an invoice per sign somewhere.
There was a quote, it was two hundred and forty-five dollars per sign plus a seventy-five dollar installation per sign.
Okay. What's that, three twenty, not three twenty off of the twenty-six hundred? That would be the motion for the five signs. Somebody like to make a motion and go forward with those?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffman made a motion to approve with deduction of one sign. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Ashbrook. For discussion, discussion for the audience. All in favor, aye? Aye. Motion passed five and a. All right, you got that, Jim, on the mic?
Yes, sir.
What we want to do? And then we'll have another workshop or, or, you know, we got to have a drop dead date on stickers and that type thing. So we'll talk about that later. Okay, second item, Jim, new business?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have Robertson Roberts working on paving through the Scott Grant program from Sixteenth Street coming to the building that we're in today. That is underway. We also, when they were doing that, got a price to make some patch repairs from Highway seventy-one to Sixteenth Street. It is in front of you today on pages twenty-two and twenty-three, but unfortunately, the number came back substantially higher. So at this point, staff recommendation will be that if we want to look at those patches, either go out to bid or, or patch a few at a time. We put in the budget this year for about fifty thousand dollars for patchwork in the next coming year. It just seems a little high because at this point in time, we really want to spend a hundred thousand dollars.
Your recommendation is not, not to do this and possibly go out to bid, just, I mean, it's not the cost. Advertise and go out to bid. I mean, I love for them to be both, that whole distance to be smooth when we get through. So we're close. And the audience that don't know, there's seventeen dips where we've had, I don't know, water leaks, sewer leaks, whatever, but they need to be repaired. Obviously, it didn't get compacted correctly the first go around. And so now with that stretch of road is not very good. So that's what we're dealing with. We thought we had Robertson Roberts here, we could get them mobilized. We thought we'd get a good deal, but, and this might be a good deal, I don't know. But it's more than we anticipated. So, well, we're invited to talk about going out to bid for this.
Yeah, I, I agree with staff's recommendation that price is definitely, I feel it's too high. I definitely don't want to spend taxpayer money on, to fix seventeen spots for seventy thousand dollars. I mean, or seventy-five thousand dollars. So I'd say let's go out to bid and just see what comes back at.
Yep. Motion back to Commissioner Lowery, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Hoffman, go out to bid or patch seventeen, patch repairs on Garrison Avenue? Any discussion you want? All in favor, aye? Aye, pose same sign. Motion passed five and a. Alrighty, Jim, you got anything else on the new business?
I'm just encouraging everyone to stay off the roads unless you have to. Our roads are potentially flooded in several areas. I know we're out today, guys are doing everything they can to get the water off the road. And luckily, we will have a low tide around four, four thirty today, hopefully the water will subside. Be careful, but you got to be careful.
Okay, all right. We're done in public works.
Jim, so a little bit of what I was gonna say to the board. You know, with really big salary, the last night, we started getting some rain bands. High tide was at ten nineteen this morning. Unfortunately, all our storm wasn't going to give one direct. So you couple the high tide with the storm surge and it puts us in a situation we're in. Hopefully, as Jim said, by four o'clock, we're seeing a big break, you know, in that stormwater evening. Unfortunately, tomorrow, high tide is eleven twenty. So if the rain bands continue, we'll be, we'll be in the same boat again tomorrow. As far as the sewer system is concerned, we currently got nine stations at full capacity. Stopped by the headquarters earlier, we're pumping Kevin roughly fifty-four hundred gallons a minute. So we're trying to manage those nine stations as well as the other forty-five we have. But our nine currently at capacity. If they don't go down before four, and I suspect they are, it's gonna be a long night for us. We'll be here until they go down. It may not be until tomorrow night, but that's where.
Comments, John? Appreciate your work, John. And once again, this can help us to identify sites that we need to work on. And I talked to you earlier about, well, not it, I talked to others about the Constitution Museum Park down there where it accumulates all the water running from Centennial down that way. And it goes toward the bio and some of it ought to be going the other way. We, we need to look at that really strongly. Do a bore or something under Gaultier Memorial.
Get some down. Well, try to get some of that stuff out.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, and it's gonna get worse according to the weather folks.
May I have that? County, but, um, it's being constructed. We just put in a drawing to have those in my desk, it's introduction right now. Hopefully, we'll get those out. I think the shipment commissioned September twenty-fifth.
We need to order podiums for.
They're actually installed, just, that's another point, Mike. So we did order podiums for two cemetery and they're, they're installed and bolted down.
Great.
Thank you. I was gonna just request that if there's not any other questions you need, I'd be excused and to get back out.
You need to, thank you. Appreciate y'all. Thank your staff. All right, surface waters, Larry online?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I don't have anything for the board at this time. I'd be glad to answer any questions, sir.
Anyone question for Larry? Okay, Larry, thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right. Here's a good one. Waste water. Kevin, you online?
Uh, we're online. So you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, thanks to John, we're getting a lot of water. And we're probably gonna have to start discharging sooner. I, I can't see any way around it, so it's gonna blow my plan out a little bit. But, so we'll start pushing water out probably tomorrow afternoon to get ahead of all this water coming in. Everything seems to be working like it should. Had to postpone the pipe work that we're gonna do on the lagoon until we get the pine back down. So that's probably gonna be a couple of months. But, so we're just waiting around, collecting water right now until we get all the little pieces, parts ready and, you know, fire up tomorrow.
Okay. Kevin, next to getting Jim to order you to start spraying, I think we strongly encourage to make sure we keep that lagoon level down. So I, I think during the night, we're gonna get a whole lot more rain. That, that concerns me a little bit, so we need to strongly look at that.
We, we've got two and a half feet of broom, which gives us seventy-eight million gallons. The, the problem with the system is we can't push it out as fast as we take it in. So that's, that means we, we've got a, and that's why we're making revolutions to, to discharge tomorrow. So that's about as quick as we can get everything up and running to start pushing the water out. So unless we get more than another sixteen inches of rain, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue with us. But it's, it's, what we're trying to do is just trying to get ahead of it. I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the whole point. I don't, we don't need to let it slip up on us. We probably would have it down a little more.
I, I agreed. I would have loved to have gotten through the end of this month without discharging, but I can't do it. We're gonna have to push water out, so.
Yeah.
That's what we'll be doing out here for a little while.
All right. Yeah, we can't control mother nature, but we're. Have begun.
Yeah, so. Any more questions?
Kevin, anybody? All right, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, we've had a good time.
Yes, sir. I had a productive meeting with FEMA over the phone discussing the four hundred and eighteen thousand that were still being held from the state. They said they would try to push the state on their end and then get back to me later this week. And if they don't see any movement, then we probably should pursue something on our end if we can't get them to move on that four hundred and eighteen thousand. The other projects are all moving forward. That's the two lift stations, the main big ones that are still out there. And, and the compactor facility has still not been finalized with FEMA. So we still have those working with FEMA. We're still finalizing the insurance. We're close on the insurance recovery and that is an adjustment to the Maddox House calculation that the FEMA, that the insurance company said they would step in and cover where FEMA increased the insurance calculation based on the federal insurance requirement for that area floodplain. So we're hopeful to get that finalized with the insurance so that we can close out the Maddox House. And what that will do will allow us to, to work exclusively with insurance money and not have to deal with FEMA when we go to the repair and rebuild of the facilities down there at the Maddox Park. So that's, that's good. The budget, just want to thank all the department heads on the budget and certainly the commissioners for, for that process. We're down to the nitty gritty of it and we're loading the budget in from units and getting ready for our rate changes and everything that we need to apply to start our new fiscal year starting October. And then the final thing I had was the FERC app committee recommendations. We have two FERC grants that were eligible to, to submit. The last two grants that we submitted were two and a half, three years ago. One was for a playground at the back of the Stack House, which we were able to secure a playground free of charge. So, so that, that one was out. And the other was for the Tenth Street Ballpark improvements. And that whole project has been put on hold. So we discussed all the options. We reviewed all of the budgeted projects that we have and currently. And then the committee came up with the recommendation on page twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-four through thirty-six. The recommendation was for improvements to the Frank Pate, or, or, excuse me, Forest Park South. The recommendation was for, uh, improvements to the, uh, Frank Pay, uh, uh, excuse me, Forest Park South, Deuter Park, to add an outdoor exercise, uh, fitness station along the walking trail. Uh, make improvements to the disc golf course and, and the improvements to the, uh, playground area. There's one playground area that doesn't have a fall zone and the roof repair on a pavilion and the bathroom. That was a recommendation for one of those fifty thousand dollar grants, and you can see the breakdown on page twenty-five of those estimated costs. And then pictures of, of options for us to, to move forward with that grant.
I think workout station, great, I had no idea it'd be thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, it, it's, it's certainly, that's not, I'm, that's not a firm price. You know, that, that's an estimate, um, and certainly, uh, we'll have to go back and revisit that budget. But, but note, the, the equipment that I saw displayed, that's displayed here was ten thousand dollars for this equipment that was displayed in the picture. But you also have the pad that is gonna go on and, and so forth, so that, those numbers haven't been driven yet.
So, you, you're basically trying to get up fifty thousand dollars, which is the max that we, we contain, but, but if we do get the grant, uh, and it comes in less, can we spend that money on other areas in that area?
Well, what we'll need to do when we apply for the grant is it, it, it helps you in the grant process to have multiple elements. Uh, like, we could add, uh, the, the parking lot improvements in there that's not listed. So, so what we'll do is we get approval with the concept, we can then go back and revisit the cost and, and revisit the, uh, the, the, the elements that we would request in the grant, and we can come back to you with a firmer number, or firmer picture of the numbers on that grant before we submit it on October one through October fifteenth, I think is the submission period. So, we could certainly come back with you before we submit it and, and give you a firmer look at the, uh, final numbers. But in concept is the fitness center of the fit, outdoor fitness equipment and the other improvements to, to the park.
Right, right, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at the Washington Complex Grant, uh, you know, we consistently talk about this tennis court and, what condition they're in. It'd be nice if we could use some of that money for demo of the, uh, tennis thing and possibly put the workout equipment at that spot. What, what do you think, Commissioner Langston, on, on, uh, you know, we talked about the tennis courts and we really can't retrofit them for anything. If we could take some of this money, count that as demo and get ready for, and possibly the workout equipment or, or something else.
We certainly could add a tennis amlet, element to it and partner it with the funds we have budgeted to try to, to, to try to do both the workout station and maybe one court.
Well, I think the workout station, though, is scattered along the trail.
Well, there's two options, either have it centrally located or scattered it around the trail.
It was, I've seen, like, different workout elements as you use the walking band.
Right.
I think, I think, uh, it'd be a good idea to have that one tennis court up and have, uh, a line of equipment in that one area, so that, uh, I think, yeah, that, you know, that one area, I mean, we have people up, uh, girls maybe are playing tennis and working out or whatever. And, um, they won't have no problem, the key is getting on and getting better at rocks, you know, but I think it'd be better just that one place with the tennis court, uh, on the other side. I think.
Could we, could we work that into somehow?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, sir.
I mean, I'm all for the recommendations of, of both sides, but, oh, I thought about this tennis court, it'd be good to get, get it up.
And I think, um, that, that disco, it'd be, it'd be nice to have some, um, some different.
Yeah, I've had really positive feedback from everybody on the Parks Committee about the use of the existing, uh, and wanting us to go ahead and finish and put the, the tee boxes in on the disc golf that goes around Deuter Park and Buck River and Lake. So, we thought it'd be a perfect addition to Washington Complex to have that same thing.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's been a big hit. My, I've got a neighbor that plays disc golf nearly every afternoon. And the concern of this parking issue, there were gonna be parking in everyone's yard, it has gotten, uh, accurate in any way. There's ample parking for those that go and.
At both locations, it certainly is, yes, sir.
Right, right, so, uh, with that being said, any other discussion, uh, Mr. Lowry, Commissioner Ashbrook, you got anything?
I love the idea, Mayor.
Okay, alright, well, I entertain a motion for the recommendations of the Firdapp Committee.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to approve, uh, the Firdapp, uh, grant application that recommended by our committee. There's a second, second, Commissioner Langston, discussion, anyone, anyone else, anyone online? Somebody back there raised two hands, come right up.
I'd like to be able to, before y'all vote, you know, if you make a second for a discussion, that you'll.
We've got a motion and a second. I feel it.
So, let me understand this. We've got a bike path, and it does not connect to the avenues, the north side of town.
Uh-huh.
I was really hoping that that would be something that would be considered. We've got a good bike path, however, uh, since the storm, we're missing elements. For example, going around Maddox Park and so forth, that's still that trail you can't get on. And then connectivity, connectivity, we've talked a lot about connectivity, Mr. Mayor. And then, that's one thing. And then trying to make sure that we have appropriate drainage or whatever we do. Because on that bike path, as you well know, uh, on Woodward, we have still poor drainage because the bike, the way the bike path was, was built.
Right.
So, whatever we're building, you have to take care of it. We've only got so many people, if you lose the prison crews, then that goes all the public works. What I've noticed is that when we lost the prison crews for COVID, which that is not overwhelmed, that put much more of the burden on public's works, and they couldn't even keep up with all the knowing, understandably so, and the upkeep. And then I wanna understand, are you going to redo the, um, the basketball court and goals behind the Stackhouse? Because I see it's a very diverse, you would utilize area, you know, as far as the basketball. And those courts are in horrible condition, and that really, I'm not sure if I was, I was trying to scroll through it and look at that. But those are things that, I, I, I get the fact that, you know, people want exercise equipment, but really, if you get out and walk and you've got pads where people can do pushups and situps, I just.
Well, that's one reason I asked Mike about, can we work money, you know, it's gotta be specific per line item. We got to spend it 'cause we provide that, or can we, you know, derramander it around where we use it somewhere else now? I think basketball court behind Stackhouse, that can just be a, uh, probably a budgetary item that we can get, uh, we, we probably got money already for that.
I, I hope so, Mr. Mayor, because I've looked at what you're spending for the tennis court for the school, which I think is a great idea. And that's expensive. If you were to look at those basketball courts, it's going to be at least if not more than, what was it, eight thousand dollars or whatever for, uh, the tennis courts? That, that, that whole area is, that concrete is cracked so badly. And again, we're not taking care of what we have.
It's tough, yeah, it is, alright.
We do have money in the budget for the Stackhouse for improvements, yes, sir.
Thank you, so, Mike. Anyone else got any comments? Got a motion and a second, first question by Commissioner. All in favor, I?
I.
I, motion passed five of. Alright. Yeah, go right here. Phone call from Ms. Sheer.
Yes, yes, I did speak with her, yes.
How did it go?
Uh, Jim and I discussed the issue and, and, uh, it really needs to be brought before the board to discuss, um, you know, she hasn't provided me with the additional information that was requested yet. That's where that was left, but it was a productive discussion.
Okay. Alright, anybody else on that item or any other Firdapp part, I think? Okay, uh, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Baxter, go ahead, sir.
Alright, I'll run through the items on the list, um, the curse of the Nerdia grants, um, the, or, or stormwater. Um, when we met, um, last month, the district asked us for particular information, um, specifically more around verifying some call assessments. We do have some call assessments that were verified by contractors. I'm in the process of preparing your response, Northwest Florida, based on their last email, we'll submit that response this week. And the, the recommendation we got during that last meeting is that they would wanna have another follow-up phone call with us before we proceeded into a second public hearing, so that's what I'm expecting, for them to reach back out and say, let's have one more meeting and then we move forward with the second public hearing, that we will submit that response this week.
Isn't, uh, some of, uh, Ms. McRoy's concerns addressed in this Nerdia thing about the bike path being higher? Was that another grant we were working on? Not a part of that, I think, some, something else, I remember us talking about.
And just speaking on the bike paths, if, and this is all subject, but if we wanna look at paths, I think recreational trails is a better program to look for, for grant money for, for doing trails. Um, Firdapp is more for set in place or parking improvements, so, but I think there's a good opportunity in the next recreational trails. We will look at bike paths and things of that sorts to reach out.
We've had, uh, we've had others talk about connectivity.
That's why we're doing Port City now.
And this Jill on, on the garden community, she's talking about connecting that.
We discussed, uh, I think we should, um, eventually, eventually, kind of, uh, grant support to, uh.
Alright, I agree, I do. Alright, any questions on Nerdia? Alright, let's go to walking path.
Um, the Port City Trail, um, so the notice of an award, notice of award and agreement has been provided to the contractor, to the local contractor. We're waiting on those documents to come back with the bonds, once this is normal procedure. Once that's secured, we'll send all that documentation in to DEP, that's the last of the information we owe them to complete what they call the task one item. Once they check off their boxes, they'll give us a, a thumbs up, issue a notice to proceed. So, I can't tell you when the projects gonna start, of course. We have from now on, right now, we'll wait on the contractor to get back and provide to them, but everything is in motion. And DEP has all the information they need at this time. Um, the C B E sewer improvements, I think, tend to start date is eleven one on that job. That's, I remember, September first. Um, here's an avenue, we've already discussed that, uh, obviously, we haven't been working the last eight or two, so at some point, they'll resume construction. Um, Long Avenue, I don't think we have any new updates there, Jim, but if you're aware of.
We're working on the application process, and today, we did receive notification on it, and we are including the funding, so, uh, it is in the works. We, as soon as we get the final grant application, we'll bring it for you for approval.
Um, downtown sewer improvement, we do have videos, um, and they're under review. We'll be working with a level of contractor to try to develop, to develop the scope. I'm assuming that in order to, to apply for that trial grant, what we're looking for is a final dollar amount on that estimate. So, that's what we're trying to work towards, a final, final dollar amount, and there, there's very visible damage in that. But it's, it's a lot of information, it's a file that's digged in a video to go through. So, we're trying to sort through that and come up with what's an acceptable scope for repair. Um, Frank Pay, uh, I had a start date, I think, this week, my fingers are still crossed, I think they have some equipment mobilized, but nothing started.
Or the city fair, Roman, uh, MoLina, yeah, they probably put that off, I would imagine, for a week anyway.
Um, beyond that, we spoke about the Firdapp, and of course, you know, we'd be happy to submit that application, do very, prepare that application if it's, if it's of the city's pleasure, you know, will help assist, however.
Yes, I'd like to discuss that with you, we can discuss it Thursday when we have our meeting on that.
Yeah, and that was another thing, the N R C, C S debris removal. I'm working with Mike, I set up a meeting for Thursday to discuss. It's not a issue, but what we're looking at right now is exactly most municipalities that do these already have a continuing services contract with a debris removal company. So, bidding is not necessary. They just opened their contract up with that debris removal service and worked with the contract amount. This one's a little bit unique because we actually have to select a contractor, so I'm looking at options right now. There's no way to quantify the amount of debris that's in the digits, so it's hard to come up with a number that's sizeable better. So, what we may be looking at here to put a request out, a proposal, and then sit down as a city and, and based on, um, based on qualifications, would choose a contractor and just negotiate a fee at that point. And that's essentially how continuing services contracted does, so that may be the best avenue. So, I'm working with N R C S to try to decide how we move forward in the big process for this.
Questions for Josh? Appreciate, love those. Yeah. Thank you, Josh. Question on, uh, John, Marvin?
Yes.
We know you, but it's not even, we gotta make it official, okay?
Okay, the question is, when you've written the sewer, uh, what about, uh, or not, possibly, do I then, you know, they, uh, start these?
I just.
The C D B G.
That was this out of right here, the C D B G sewer.
Okay, okay.
We just got it titled, dude.
Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, Jim, code enforcement?
Yes, sir, we have two that we're currently working now, uh, working with the contractor to do a cleanup, uh, on Sixth Street, and we're looking for a demo on Avenue B, so that should be starting next couple of weeks. We need to shore up, uh, right of entry, making sure utilities are, uh, taken care of before we get any of the equipment. Uh, so those are being taken place, and we're also scheduling to do here, and so, see several more come before, special maintenance training come before you as to, of course, that. Moving along.
Um, Mr. Clint? The house, the, um, Robinson House on Sixteenth Street.
I have not heard from Tom, I'll call this afternoon and see what's up there.
That meter is running, we gave him sixty days, so we'll be voting to, I believe that's right, to have it.
I don't know. And, uh, possibly a month ago, if he did that, time flies, but.
Let's, let's. Close, did we actually, we told you meeting before, 'cause I wasn't here last time, and that's.
Oh, we did, so I, I didn't even know that, okay, so I'll see where they're at.
You, you need to, 'cause I'm in code enforcement, the right level on the top. I mean, we're ready to go get it cleaned up.
We haven't released our, our, our lean, yeah, don't they clean it up?
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
Well, appreciate it.
Uh, Kikdoki, anything else, Jim on code?
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate their work, you're mighty busy, I know. Uh, Police Department?
Uh, the only updates I have is we're still on schedule as far as we can tell on the police department. We get furniture in about nine days. Uh, we had some little hiccups that all of us overlooked. Uh, we've got run telephone wires, so they got a full telephone through the cat five cable conduit. But, uh, he said that would, would not set us back. Some other issues that we found, we did a checked off list, there's some things that, uh, the contractor's gonna have to fix. And other than that, we're moving ahead, everything else. Other than that, we're moving ahead, everything else looks good.
Anybody got any questions? Appreciate y'all's work and I know you're busy today with your guys, so thank you. Ms. Pierce?
Yes, sir, gentlemen, on page thirty-seven, you'll see the list of the seven firms that submitted applications for the, to be considered for the request for qualifications. After review, it's staff recommendation that we go with the M L D. They have prior experience with us. They have worked with us through the years on our different projects and feel like they're very knowledgeable of what we need and have experience with them. And it's our recommendation that we approve M L D for the architectural services for historical, because that's one of their primary functions, is historical structures.
Yeah, I've worked with them before, they're very knowledgeable about our projects, put it that way. Is there a motion to accept staff recommendation on an architect?
Still moved.
Okay, Mr. Ashbrook, there's second, 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 Mr. Lowery, discussion, anyone? I think maybe for the audience, we, to apply for historical grants and that type thing, you have to have an architect of record. And so that's why we're choosing this firm is architect record on any of our grants for historical type grants. So that's, these folks are very knowledgeable. So all in favor, aye? Those same same motion passed, five and a.
All right, so our next request to bid the keeper's quarters, we have, this would be for the Eglin Keeper's Quarters, which is closest to the solar drive. It has nothing inside, it was gutted, had to do the mole remediation. But this would be to put it back together and move forward with the Maritime Museum and other artifacts that we hope to place in there.
Is covered by insurance at present time?
That's correct.
Approximately eighty thousand dollars in insurance fund.
Just for that one percent?
Yes, sir.
We do have a grant, the county had agreed to fund helping with creating the museum, getting the lens displayed and all. And that's, you know, they've been gracious and kind to allow us a little extra time because of the issues we've had. But we need to get it moving and get all of it wound up.
All right, there are motion to go out and bid for renovation of Eglin Keeper's Quarters. So move, motion back to Mr. Lowery, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ashbrook, okay, discussion, anyone? All in favor, aye? Motion passed five votes, so we can get going on that.
Thanks, gentlemen, we will get moving on it. No, sir.
All right, next item, citizens to be heard, anyone like to speak? Come right up now. Please sign in, state your name.
Number one, the trash cans down at Jitty Park, they look incredible. And it seems to be keeping the birds. So I appreciate.
Thank you, thank you to John and Jim.
Going to the NERTA proposed concepts. One of the things when I came here, it's been over a month ago, talked about putting them online. Was that ever accomplished?
They put what part of it online?
The things that, the different proposals that Josh sent forward to Northwest Water Management this year. That his plans would be easy enough to scan and put online or on the city website.
I don't know. I'll ask Jim and all the concern Josh, and I'm not sure if you want the original plans or you want his responses to the latest question.
I can see the original plans. I think we need to kind of start there. And I understand that they have written, you know, rebuttal to the plans. But just to see their original plans, I mean, that should have really, we're supposed to have workshops, et cetera. So how can citizens react if we don't even know what the plans are?
I agree. Is that, can we do that, Jim? Jim and Josh, can y'all help with that?
Pretty soon, I hope, because like I said, it's been over a month since I requested that.
All right, so we're trying to get it next week.
Okay, I want to read something really quick, Mr. Mayor, it wouldn't take but just a second. But this just goes to the significance of what we're seeing the last few days. This is from the newspaper in Panama City or from W N B D. And it's for Pirates Cove over in Panama City. It says, this is a significant amount of rain, Pirates Cove Director Jim Hamilton said. Water flooded the docks early Monday morning and stuck around throughout the day. He also said this is the worst flooding he has seen since Hurricane Michael, when these same docks sustained natural damage. So when people said to us that that was a five hundred year event, this water is not a five hundred year event. It proves that, you know, two years later, the amount of water that we see. If you go down the corridor, go Sixteenth Street and look at the tidally driven canal, you'll see how full it is. And water creeping up. And one of the things we have been talking about for two years now is trying to get the drainage and the culverts, culverts all cleaned out. That needs to be done. I don't think, I think this is going to be a more often occurrence than a rare occurrence. So if you look at people's backyard on Marvin, you will see that it's creeping up again into their yards. So this is very serious and it goes back to our original concern about keeping that area wetland. So it very much impacts us, which ties to Sam Josh's point. And then I think, oh, one other thing, when you drive down ninety-eight, you're coming into the city, there used to be the wooden sign that's, is that also a sign that y'all are looking to replace, welcome to?
It's ready, all the poster in the ground there, just wait to paint them and put it up. Very nice, you can go by Ramsey and ask Willie to let you look at it if you want and send it back, it's very, very nice.
Good, all right, well, that's all I have for today and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, come up, sir.
Couple of recommendations based on the question. The Washington area, I think. One of the things that I think that we could do is to try to get people to come visit the area a little bit more. I know this one is talking about basketball and recreation areas to play. The area out there, especially on the backside of that, that gym area out there is perfect with the over cover for basketball. And the court is perfect. How do we get people to get involved, coming out there and visiting there, because it's a beautiful place to play. And right next to it, you've got some exercise equipment out there that probably just needs some upgrade. But getting people to come, because it's a beautiful area, you know, especially if people participate in how, I started walking again in order to get my lungs back up. I go out there and start exercising a little bit, it's just a beautiful place to come. You got a lot of room out there, you got parking area and so forth and so on. You just said it's not being visited. We talk about it, but we're not really visiting, making it appear as a place you want to go. I think we need to, you know, do that a little bit more, advertise, you know, that place out there as a place to come, have some recreational thing. The court, what we're talking about, the tennis ball court here, I don't know if it could be overlaid, but it's the only concrete out there that's really broken. It needs to be repaired, but I think the rest of the area just needs to be beautified just a little bit more. And then give some people some attraction to come, give them some direction to come or actually make it, you know, public so people can come over there and play. So that, that will cover for basketball, people put about fourteen players one time.
Now, kids prefer to play in the gym than they do out there, that's what I asked you. I mean, you know, I read the minutes from last meeting, the person said, kids have nowhere to go, have nothing to do or something like that. And I'm thinking, the kids gonna find something to do, they'll find a basketball court or a baseball field or something to play ball in the afternoon. But, but if the gym's not open, would they play there?
They play out there. I think they'd rather think the gym inside, of course, if the gym's closed, they'd rather go out there. I think it's more about, I think, if it's on the website, you put it on website.
I think so.
If it is, it's just recent. And that's what I'm saying, we can advertise that, because you not only have the covering, there's three sets of goals running both ways under the cover. And then you have another one off to the side over there. And given the kids are playing, I'm just saying, I think we need to just brighten the light, because even sometimes we go out there and have church. So, you know, the cover, you know, we can't go into a building.
I think Jim said that we're working on the lights around the softball field, probably inside the, inside the court. Also, Coach Parker will be out there all the time with the girls and practice. They like to go in the gym, but I think he prefers, Coach Parker, it don't matter to him. I think it don't, it really don't matter to the kids, because that's basically the only place they got to go to try to do some recreation. And they think, they think he's been up recently, you know, I mean, we don't have trouble with the kids doing things regardless of what we get, you know. I think overall, if it's a nice facility, I think we're doing a pretty good job there, you know. And I think that with L E D lights inside, with the bathrooms coming, with the, with the, with the, yeah. That that we have coming, I think it'd be a nice facility. Soaps, I think it will be sooner than later, but it's still a lot of things that we have to work on. It's still a lot of things we have to work on, you know. I think that moving forward with all the things that we have planned, it'll be a nice area. We just need to advertise it a little more and make it a friendly place to be, you know. Because I think that most people feel that, you know, with it being back there like that, that, you know, they're fearful of going, going over there and just be honest, you know. Just be honest about it, so advertise it as a friendly place, so I think it'd be fun.
And I agree with that. And basically, I'm saying if we do that, it'll make it more appealing, because that ball field out there, I played on it when I was back in nineteen sixty-four. And that ball field is still there, some good ground. I think if we docked it up a little bit, you know, it can be used as one of the fields that some of the kids can go to buy, practice or play in optional game. So those things I think just need to be right. And as far as, you know, like, I mentioned, somebody mentioned bicycle track. If there's a way that we can connect coming off of Garrison, all the way to that track over there, that would be a beautiful thing. It's something that we can look at.
And that's a numerous time, and I think it's a matter of, of mine, I think everybody's on board with that.
And the only other person I have, I have, you know, person down Avenue B, like we have our church at, two sixty-one, two sixty-three and two sixty-five. We've been having a lot of sewer problems out there. And I know some of them, but we try to find a way to get that house disconnected to the church property. Because they, back in that day, we had all three, four houses on one sewer. So we have an issue there, need to find a way to fix that, because that house is running to the church property and it's causing us a lot of sewer problems. We've had to send a truck out there at least almost once a month.
You'll come see me, we'll get a hold of the guys and figure out where we're off. But Avenue C and D, that is part of the flip line area, that's going to become M L P to.
Thank you, sir. Next, Marvin, you got anything to add?
I mean, I was on to bring up, last meeting, that's a gathering, came in from a, a Recreation Department, how we, it's a more consideration, looking into it in the near future. Because I think that will help, especially when it comes to the youth and activities. If we really had our own Recreation Department instead of workforce, I think you said, the front of workforce. Am I correct? That was discussed last week.
We have a part-time position to add someone for recreation, but we don't have.
Don't have a.
We don't have a full-time. We have two employees that are in the Recreation Department, but they mainly cut grass. But we did add another part-time employee in this budget for recreation, but not a full-time.
So that's coming this year?
It's coming, it's coming.
Part-time.
Part-time.
But we not going to establish our own city, our Recreation Department?
We have a Recreation Department, has two employees in it, and we're going to add one part-time employee.
So we've basically already got, they worked on the public work.
Because it was, I'm sorry, it was, I think it was discussed that we do not have.
We don't have a Recreation Director, that's what the question is.
Oh, Director. Okay, then I pass that on to him. But other than that, the gym, I utilize, I didn't want to say thanks, because the trust has been, you know, most quote, I've been using that facility. I did a whole, my trust service just by every, every Sunday when it's not raining. And one Sunday it wasn't raining, we said that service, so thank you, thank y'all for that. And it is, it's a facility that I think is totally commonly utilized, but that Mr. Davis said, that we get a real opportunity to utilize, that's what it is, we're really, yeah.
With the ground.
I do it for my trust every, every week. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come right up, please, now. State your name, address and sign in, please. Just for the record, amazing, we know.
Before I state what I came up here for, I think concerning the centers, or concerned about the Recreation Center out there for Washington, maybe some signage along the highway would help attract attention to that. Might, just might be a consideration, because if people don't know it's there, obviously they're not. Well, I have a concern, concerning drainage in the area. I was noticing, especially when, I mean, I noticed this before, but it was really so obvious this morning, when it had the rains. Over at Ellen Hennardus's house at Elm Street, there's a virtual lake there in her yard. Actually, under my house, it was like a river flowing, but through, pretty rapidly. But I noticed with the, a building, rebuilding of the fast food store there on the corner, that they're building the land up. And, you know, what that's going to do is it's going to dump water into the neighboring area. And I know down in Naples, where we lived for six years, there were people who came in with lots of planning, who built their land up, put their house on it. And then the local people who were there all the time, suddenly their land that was dry became a flood area. And so what the city did in that case was they passed an ordinance that if you build your land up, you've got to provide a ditch between your property and your neighbors for drainage. Because otherwise, what they're doing is dumping water on their neighbor's property, and they never had any property before. And I just, you know, just wanted to bring that up in consideration, because especially in Houston, her yard is just a lake out there now. It's low and there are areas that we have water in it, even without that rise next door. But I mean, it's, it has increased the problem. But I mean, it's, it has increased the problem big time, of course.
Right, right. And they have development plans, they submit to our Building Department, and they're supposed to comply with, with all those type things and run off, right? Jim, when you submit plans, you've got to have plans in there that takes care of stormwater.
That's great. I made a note of that. It's amazing what I'm going to do with all of this, make sure they follow and make sure that they have the proper permits through D E P and make sure, because you're not supposed to be able to shed water on your neighbor's property.
And they don't have a retention bond, they never have, but now they're building a higher, and it could be, it could be a bigger problem for the neighbors, there's no doubt. Thank you for bringing that up. And I imagine they were required to build up, you know, things with, yeah, like, yeah. So I think D E P should have done their part too.
I've been in the same situation. I've got a house built about now. And the water's coming from the church behind me, it built up a little bit above me. But it's been tough, I tell you. I definitely understand, definitely should have done something about it. Just like you just say, you don't care about some, you know.
That's supposed to be, but you know. Anyway, that's always, these bad times always bring out things that, you know, we got to think about the future. You can talk about noble woman, if you believe her, if you don't believe in her, that's okay. I know we're having a lot of high water and Mr. McCorrigan's right, it's two years later, we got a lot of water. But the problem is that stormwater in Fort St. Joe's put in and probably over a hundred years ago, when, when the pipes brought it in, it high tide, never above high tide. But now the tide gets up over the outflows, that water's got nowhere to go. All this is going to do is back up. It's just, it's going to find its lowest spot and that's unfortunate for most of us. But anyway, anybody else? All right, Commissioners, I'm going to let the fellow Zoom go first. Commissioner Ashbrook, you got anything today?
Mayor, I'm actually doing well, other than I'm wet.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hoplin.
The only thing that I wanted to cover today was, it's kind of ironic, I guess, the whole city is flooded. But we've had a place that has been discussed for many, many years, many years before me sitting here. And that's that alleyway, I don't know if you call it Sixth Street Project or Seventh Street, but I received some phone calls today. And the last time we talked about it, I was given a start date within that month. And I don't believe anything has been done. I'm at the point where I think the job is probably too big and will be too long of a job to put on our city workers. It's just a matter of manpower. I don't think we have the manpower. If we did, we'd already have the job done. And I was told today this job's been on the books for six years. So we've got to find these people some relief. I'm sure everyone sitting here has dealt with the concern, and I think it's a valid concern. So I'm ready for us to start looking at going out and getting some bids, finding out what will it cost us to do. We've waited way too long. So I assured the two individuals that I talked to today that it's still on our books, but we just keep moving it back. And I'm not putting the blame on public works, I'm not blaming anybody. I think the city is just, for one, I think we don't have enough staff. We don't have enough workers to do that job. And then if we did divert them over there to a job of this size, there's going to be a lot of things that aren't done. So we need to find out what will it cost? Let's go out for bids and then let's make the decision based on that, on that amount of bids. That's where I'm at today.
And that project's been engineered, show ready, is that correct, yes?
We actually have the materials on, on, and our lot, city property.
So we've already bought the material.
That's why, yeah, that's, I remember now.
It seems like somebody else has always come up here, Zach, right? We have the material, we just not, we have not carried for it.
But so where we stand right now, basically, is we just about have to do it. Or how are we going to bid it out?
I guess we can bid out the labor, but we need to have a heart-to-heart with the department heads and decide, do we have the ability to do it? Because if you look at what we've done, actually not done, other than ordering some pipe, the answer may be, we just can't get to it. Then, then let's see, can we afford to bid it out or, you know, get the prices and see if we can move forward. We've got to do something. Their yards are flooding when we get an inch of rain. So you can imagine what they're dealing with today.
So let's put that upon the agenda for the next meeting, please. It's a show up, so it won't get under here again.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Langston.
I've got a couple of things. I think we need to do some signs, put up, bear signs. He is about a week and a half ago, come out of Windmark Beach and bear, a bear run. Get ready to get on the bus, catch the bus.
Wow.
I think the bear was doing, going in the, no, I'm sorry, I said Windmark Beach, Gateway. He got a dumpster there, you know, and throwing the garbage in there. The kids come out, get ready to go school, bear, that's his, that's Mark. Couple, couple of days last week, they ran kids. The bear was out there and ran kids a couple of days. I just think we need to, at least get some signs put up somewhere, bear signs. I mean, basically, I don't know what we can do, you know. I mean, we tried everything and, I don't know.
Mayor proof, dumpsters, we talked to B C C about that and they want to charge for the locks and-
Gateway apartments is totally compliant. They, they got, they paid for the locks, the locks on their dumpsters. They redid something on their gates. We probably go out about four times a week to Apollo Street, right around in there, chasing the bear off. And if we, every time we're called, we call F W C to try and get them to do something. And their department has went more into the wildlife preservation.
Location.
So their hands are kind of tied, so they report it to the biologists. They hand out, some handouts they were given and that's where we sit. I mean, if, if we witness a bear chasing kids, we're going to protect the kids. So, so.
I just don't want anything to happen to a kid and then we say, oh, you know, or somebody gets themselves a shoe or a bat because more than people, more than one. They're going to people, you know, decided in the backyard, in the backyard, turning the grill.
Ms. Charlotte, if you, I'll help you, let's draft a letter, I want to send to the head of the F W C.
That's true.
And with some stronger wording language and see, you know, we were tired of the handouts and about keep your trash cans locked and all that. We need to have a little stronger language in there that we're going to hold them responsible if one of our children get mauled by a, by a bear that's, we already reported this nuisance bear in that area. How many times do we have to do it? So, so let's do that and then we call, chief calls and everybody calls, but, but nothing being done, so. I don't know if that'll help or not. You've been there, you've been working.
The bear, the bear policy has changed so many times in my career working with F W C. It went from a time of hands off on the bear to if you get a call, more than two or three calls, and the bear displayed certain behavior, then they sent a bear tracker out, which we have a licensed bear tracker in the county. They caught the bear and they disposed of the bear. Then when another biologist takes the mentality that we're never going to harm another bear in the state of Florida, Florida's overrun with bears. We used to have a bear hunt. And until we can send the message to F W C that the liability is shifting to your agency, I think the letter also should go to the governor's office. I think the letter should go to the five commissioners or maybe seven commissioners of the F W C and tell them that we are expecting when we complain about an area that the bear displays that type of behavior, chasing a child, that they bring the trap out, they catch the bear, and they dispose of the bear.
Because there's actually three bears in that neighborhood. There's a cell and two yearlings in that area. So a lot of people think it's that same bear ravaging the neighborhood, whereas it's actually three bears.
Ms. Charlotte, we'll, we'll make sure we carve a copy out of what Commissioner Hoplin has suggested.
Yes, sir.
See if we can get somebody to answer. Thank you. You got anything?
I just want to add, I know when I did garbage for the years, always compared it back to Fort St. Joe with the bears, there's no can that, that, that we can put a lock on that of people when they're out.
Exactly.
And when they're hungry like that, it has to be another deterrent for them. Whatever way the city come up with, it has to be that way. Because those bears, when they get hungry, they don't care about a can or dumpster or a lock. They want to rip into it. And I've seen them do it. They'll be dumpster. We have real steel dumpster, they steal people's stuff. I don't know how they do it, but they're dangerous. They seem to have to do something about it.
And that's, that's why we caution about calling F W C out to individuals' home addresses because their way of thinking now is if your garbage isn't secured, they're going to find you.
Yes.
So we, we call them out to an area, we won't call them to, say, one thirteen Bay Street, because they will rat those people out and it's a five hundred dollar fine for not securing your garbage.
We actually got a notice from the city in reference to trash on our property from the bear. I had to explain, if it wasn't a city worker that left out the trash, if we can get a bear permit, we can take care of the problem. But bears are going on city property and dumping trash and we get blamed for it too. So there's a real problem with these bears and the mess they're causing for us here.
Yeah, all, all the woods around the Lizville area is slap full of trash. Where they drag it, I mean, some people have to go get their trash cans out of the woods. As it just pushes on.
We'll send the letter and see if they at least get a response out of somebody. Mr. Lowery.
I'm good. Echoes comments on the bear.
Yes, yeah. Only thing I got is thank all you guys for my absence last meeting. Thank you for your service as always, but taking care of things while I was gone. Also, you got, in front of you, you got an update written in black and red that talks about all our things we got going on right now. So keep those close to you and let's, let's start checking some of them off the list. And at least it kind of gives an idea of what, what we're working on. And I'm not, let's see, on here, it's not even the Eglin bid. And that'll be on here shortly too, so that'd be one other thing. The Maddox, that on here, let me look. Maddox House is not on here either, so we've got a lot of projects and city's working hard to get them done. And let's just keep our feet and fire on.
I said, to let the public know what we're doing.
Absolutely.
Yes, my project, that on our website.
Yeah, can we put that on Facebook or website? All our projects count, Maddox House, Eglin. Understand that we've got enough money to bank the life house, which needed it when we first put it up, ever how many years ago it was. So we got a lot, we got some money to do some things, let's just take them off the list. Nothing else, we'll thank y'all for coming, we'll stand adjourned.
Just remember, bug it back here at five.
Five o'clock. Yeah, thank you for that reminder.